What are you doing to these people? We're on, no.
We have a Zoom to start.
All right. Who's singing? Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Yaton Borough Council, February 8th. This is our coffee slash workshop meeting, and we will begin with a Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. Mr. Secretary, can you please begin our roll call, beginning with our esteemed mayor?
All right, Madam President, Mayor Hemkens.
Present.
President Monroe.
Present.
Vice President Ruhlclout.
Present.
Counselor Truheart.
Present.
Counselor Beatty.
Present.
Counselor Peets.
Present.
Counselor Johnson. Kill Kenny Lawhorn. Anoni Engineering.
Present.
Tax Collector Hughes.
Present.
Finance Director Nuclear, present. Madam President, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We, our next item is our citizens forum. I don't see any forums that have come in, but it does appear that we may have a presentation.
We have a presentation.
Is that after citizens forum? Where is that?
That is after citizens forum, yes. It's under the President's report.
It's under the President's report. All right. So are there any citizens wishing to speak? No forums? Guys, keep it interesting. All right, this is fun. All right, so next we will move on to Mayor Hapkins.
That's pretty quick. Just a couple of things. My report stands to be submitted. A couple of things on the score. The next mayor's forum will be March 7th, Thursday, March 7th. Dr. B. Coats, the superintendent of William Penn School District, has agreed to come out. We've been trying to get him for a couple of months, and that's the next available time he has. I didn't ask him for that day. He couldn't come today, and he's unavailable for next week's legislative meeting. So he said March 7th is the first time, the first public meeting he could attend. So please come out. I'm going to go down my list. He's going to address those questions of the access to the new facility for Yaton residents, policing the field by our officers, if we could underwrite some of that. Preference of Saturday mornings rather than Friday evenings for football games to get a less rowdier crowd. The, very important, something's developing. The William Penn School District was a partner in the lawsuit against the state citing an unfair funding formula that we're underfunded, that it's unconstitutional, the way they're funding the schools, and the courts agreed. So right now, the governor and the state legislators are figuring out how to meet that judgment and what it will meet, that they have to generate other income to fund the schools. There's going to be millions of dollars added to the, I think he said a billion dollars, but anyway, to the overall education budget, and that will result in William Penn School District receiving a big increase. And our question to him and to our school board members, which I am inviting also to the mayor's forum, is what will that mean for tax relief? Would it, could it result in tax relief for some of our residents, especially our elderly who do not have foreign fixed incomes and don't have children in the, in the school? So anyway, that's a discussion that we need to have, and we're going to start by asking him that question. There is an ordinance to ban ski masks that we have in Yaton. I know that that's been advertised, Colleen.
Yes, sir.
So I believe that will be ready to be voted upon next week?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Police staffing, we're up to full staffing finally for first time in several years. I want to thank the counselors for being proactive in that. Of course, the Civil Service Commission in chief, Giomarco, for this. It could go very easily and straightforwardly when we all work together, and we saw an example of that in this new administration. Holding cells normalization. As you know, we've had problems with the holding cell. We had two suicides last year, which necessitated a complete review. It's been upgraded. We've had new audiovisual monitors to state-of-the-art monitors, and it's been reviewed by three chiefs of police, a new layout, as well as our insurance carrier has taken a look, and they all gave their blessings that they fill us up to snuff now to readmit or to start up using the holding cells for temporary prisoners before they could be remanded to another jurisdiction. The final piece is to upgrade our policy, and Chief Giomarco has done that. I've taken a look at it. This looks good to me, and I've given that over to our solicitor and also our counselors to have a look at it before we go live. We'd like to do that next week if possible. The chief says that it just takes a lot of time and effort, and we waste man-hours for, to remand the prisoners to, right now, is Upper Darby. And he would like to get it back in order as soon as possible. But anyway, that's the goal. But we'd like also the counselors. I think some counselors have taken a look downstairs. But when you get a chance, take a look downstairs to see the improvements before, I want everybody to be on the same page before we go live. But anyway, that's the proposed timeline. And the other thing is, many of you may know, but former Yaton Borough Councilor, Jack Byrne, passed away this past week. He was 85. He was a leader in this community. He oversaw a lot of changes in the demographics and politics, and he was one of the leaders who helped spearhead the old Yaton into a new Yaton. Believe he lived on the same street as Tony, Truheart, was the neighbor of Tony, Councilor Tony Truheart. He was a, I called him a gentle giant. He was very brilliant, very committed, consistent. And he worked for, not just the Democratic Party, but he worked for this borough tirelessly. And his funeral will be held at St. Louis Catholic Church on West Cops Creek on tomorrow. Viewing will be from 9:30 to 11:00 a.m. with the service to follow at 11:00 a.m. And in his memory, we will do a proclamation, and we will lower the flag for half-staff in his honor, being he was an elected official and in great standing, and helped us transition from the old Yaton to the new Yaton, and was also one of the founders of Town Watch. So over the weekend, we'll lower the flag at half-staff in his memory, I think as well. Very well deserved. Didn't always agree with Jack, but he was a great guy and quite a gentleman and a great leader for the borough. Everybody, I believe, knows about the incident yesterday. Unfortunate incident in East Lansdowne, where a family fell by this tragedy, and two officers were shot, one from East Lansdowne and the other from Lansdowne. Our officers immediately backed up those officers, and chief, they're one of the first people on the scene. I'll let you take over on that. That ends my report, but why don't you, could you just give an update on where we are with that? Yeah, this is a little unusual, so we'll just allow it.
Just, we just, we arrived, as we arrived, we came in off of Baltimore Avenue, myself, Detective Leah Saznik, Sergeant Jay Hilton, and Tony Johnson and two other officers. We, as we got on scene, without going into too much detail, we were able to secure the back of the house as Upper Darby was able to position themselves and make the rescue. We stayed out there the whole time. We were out there unfortunately when the fire started to burn, and we watched everything come down. So our officers did a great job. My number-one concern at that point was our officer safeties. We all had our, I know there was people asking why stuff wasn't put out, and I'm trying to figure it out. If they could tell me how to hold the Glock in my hand and keep my other hand focused on the house, that's why information wasn't put out at that point. My number-one concern was my, the safety of the people in that house, the safety of the officers, the officers on scene. Then a number, after that happened, then we had a chance to breathe. We had officers out there visibly shaken. So at that point, we got the, with FOP, lives 27, we're able to get them counseling, we're able to get our officers counseling immediately. So that was our concern last night. And I was in contact with Mr. Mayor and with Mr. Nafis, too, just to let them know what was going on. But it was a situation that you don't think it could happen. It could happen anywhere. We learned a lot of lessons of that. Upper Darby had shields to deploy, so it was great. Shields are ballistic shields. They were able to utilize shields, and it was just, everyone did a great job. Unfortunately, you don't want to see any loss of life. There was a little girl in there, 11. That's how the call came out. You know, you hear these calls, person with a gun, and you're like, yeah, somebody's calling to get the cops. As we're going up the hill, all of a sudden, we hear, the dispatcher comes over and says, "The call taker hears shots in the background." You know, so you know something's active. As we're going, we're making, we just banged the left on Baltimore, and that's when we hear the officer screaming out, "I've been shot." And I'm telling you right now, 28 years on his job, you hear that, and it's something you hear. And now responsible for 21 people downstairs, and you know, it's something that you live with every day. And getting there, when we got out of the car, when I tell you, and I've worked in Kensington, I'm used to gunfire. I lived in Philly my whole life. Unfortunately, I'm used to gunfire, and the people who live close to Philly is used to gunfire. But when you hear that, the rapid succession of gunfire, you know what's going on. So, but the officers did a great job. I mean, everyone did a great job, so.
We want to thank you. Thank you very much, chief, and the police department. Everybody did yeoman's job to rally around. That's how we work in Delaware County. We support each other. When there's a call, every available cop, especially even the heightened alert of that nature, everybody converge, all the law enforcement officers in the area converges on the, on the scene. And we were one of the first there to back up the, those officers. And there was still gunfire when you arrived, right, chief? Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Chief, my concern with the horrendous situation is do, first of all, our officers who are on scene, but then I'm thinking of the officers and the first responders from East Lansdowne and Lansdowne, do they need the support of the chaplains? Because I cannot imagine standing there, watching this go on and knowing I can't do anything to save these people in there.
Yeah, I think it'd be good. We'll talk all about it. But we had a great crisis, and I believe the crisis is an urgent point. You have to come over to my family and just even prior to that, and their last 27th experience. I mean, they were there, and I saw, and you can just know, you saw someone walking around. I'm not going to mention these.
Chief, we're on Zoom, so for the benefit of the people in the audience.
We, immediately, myself and the other chiefs, noticed someone walking around with the deer in the headlights stares. After everything kind of calm, not calm down, but the fire department was able to get to do their job. And so we grabbed him and brought him back here immediately and start debriefing him, because it's something that, you know, people can go through their whole career and never have, God willing, never pull a gun out or never hear that. And it's, but I would definitely get with you offline, because the chaplain would be a great resource.
Any other questions at this time? Okay, thank you very much. There ends my report, Madam President.
All right, thank you, mayor. And we'll certainly keep all of the law enforcement and family in our thoughts and prayers when chief is there. Any other way that we can support our officers, please do let us know.
Oh, one other thing. So one officer was released today from the hospital. The other officer is undergoing surgery, but should be released tomorrow, I believe. So thank God it wasn't any worse. It could very easily, as bad as this job was, it could have easily been, been much worse. They did recover, I believe, three bodies today so far. They believe three others are still in the, in the burnt-out home, but they haven't recovered the other three bodies yet, although there were some reports that there were six, but it's actually three, with expectation that they, they may find three more. So that's, that's where, yes, counsel.
I was going to speak up. I know the family. They're from Yaton originally. The family, the parents, which will be the grandparents of the victim. The young lady was married to an Asian gentleman, so her family, the live ones, are from Yaton. They used to live on Black Avenue. So I know the grandparents deceased. So just keep that family in prayer. Also, they were members of my church, so. I did not find that out to them this morning, so that's a lot. So just keep the family in prayer. When we look at the news sometime, we see, oh, you know, that's a shame. These are bodies, these are people, families, and kind of hit home because they were from this town. Well, the grandparents not necessarily the family that live in the house. So just keep the loved ones, if you are personal faith, in your prayers, because the father who is dealing with his grandchildren and his daughter being killed by her in-law, her brother-in-law, and he lost his wife in 2021 due to COVID. So it's a lot. So just keep that family in prayers.
Thank you, counsel.
All right. Thank you very much. Now we will move on to our president's report. Our first order of business is, a long time coming. We recognize the importance of the work that's done here for this community, and we know that people need to be here for this community. So our next order of business, I'm asking for a motion to consider accepting the resignation of Counselor Carlett Brooks from Yaton Borough Council.
I make a motion to accept her resignation from Counselor Brooks.
Second.
Having been moved and properly seconded on the question, hearing that, can we have a roll call vote, please?
President Monroe.
Yes.
Vice President Ruhlclout.
Yes.
Counselor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Peets.
Yes.
Counselor Truheart.
Yes. The vote is unanimous that motion carries. In preparation for this resignation, we have asked for submissions of letters of interest from community members to fill this vacancy. We will be accepting those letters until tomorrow closes business, and this council will make an appointment for a replacement. This also brings me to realize that Counselor Johnson's not here. And I know that, I spoke with her yesterday, and she actually called me and wanting to ask questions about the event that happened yesterday. So did you receive any information about her absence for today? She's telling me that she noticed all of the police activity on her way to the post office. Is she okay?
When she spoke to me yesterday, she was just concerned with the situation, but she didn't mention that she was supposed to attend tonight. So, so no, I didn't hear.
So, in the same vein that we've asked other counselors who've abandoned their role with our community to resign, I'm going to ask that our solicitor extend our Quo Gravanto letter to Counselor Johnson as well. If we're going to accept this role that our constituents have elected us to serve, we need to be here. Showing up is important. All right. On that note, I believe then our presentation regarding 404 Industry Park Drive project is up next.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
I'm just going to ask that you speak into the microphone, because we do have people on Zoom.
Yes, if I can just have a moment to want to set up.
Oh, absolutely. And while we're getting set up, I'll just move on to item C for now. Just, it's not on your, on the agenda, but I just wanted to make the announcement that we met, the personnel committee met this evening to discuss some personnel matters within the borough, our ongoing vacancy for our borough manager position. Hopefully, we've come up with a solution that would alleviate Mr. Nichols some of his million hats, although we are thankful that he is willing to serve all of them. But the personnel committee did meet, and we're looking forward to some positive changes here in Yaton.
I can say also that people in the audience will also be able to see you in the morning. I'll support this way. So, good evening, everybody.
Evening.
My name is Simone Guy of Guy &amp; Jim. I am here to represent Philly's Best State Company that you are probably familiar with. They are, they have facilities in Upper Darby at the end of Industrial Park Drive, and now a new building in Yaton, this 404 Industrial Park Drive. They are, they have been in good standing with the community for many years, and they are very happy to come here. And I would like to invite Mr. Akranis, the president of the company, to say a few words about the company.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Zaphirus Akranis. I'm the president of Philly's Best State. I don't know how close I have to state it. Yeah, we are, you know, we're a family-owned business, a second generation. It's me, my brother, and my sister running the company. My parents are recently retired. And, you know, one of the cool opportunities we have in this transition is we get to expand the business. So we had the opportunity with our, from our parents. We have blessings to continue to grow. And so that kind of led us into this opportunity. We needed to expand our footprint to continue to provide the amount of product we need for our customers. So sales are good, and so we've needed additional space. And last year, around June, we acquired 404 Industrial, which is up the street from our, I guess, I don't know if it's Upper Darby or Yaton, but it's Yaton Address Properties. We have two properties, 610 Industrial and 619 that we occupy, and this is now our third. And the goal here is for us to do a renovation to the facility, and it kind of led us to where we are today, having to look at the options of perhaps tearing it down and building up, you know, a new cold storage manufacturing plant. So we wanted to talk a little bit about that. This is the project. We, our hope is to bring jobs to the community, bring additional income to the community, and participate and continue to grow in this, in this community that we've called our home for the last 25 years. So, yeah. That's all I got. It's good. Thank you. Do you have any questions for me?
So, yes, just for the, for the benefit of the, you know, the people on Zoom, as well as the people here, can you tell us what we're looking at?
Yes, absolutely. The engineer.
I would describe the plan.
Perfect, yes. So what I will say is, this is the existing facility. It's approximately 40,000 square feet. And what we're, what we're looking to do with that facility is, it's, it's.
Maybe I could.
Yeah.
Sure. Anyway, they acquired the existing building that was owned by a company that's left. Other things that nowadays, the plan is to renovate the building, change it a little bit, and I will describe power, and operate it, which, at least I believe, it will be a great asset to the community.
Okay, so what type of, what activity is going to happen in this building? Well, you know, I have a series of questions, so we'll start with that one. What type of activity will happen in this building that you're proposing?
So, we're a Philly steak manufacturer, so we're a meat processor. We specialize in making Philly steak products. So it's like, you know, the deli meats we buy in the supermarket, we have the same thing, thin sliced, portion-controlled beef and chicken products that we sell through food service primarily. And so the facility would be an extension of our processing space. We would be doing slicing and packaging and shipping out of this facility. We, it's generally just expanding our processing capabilities. We are reaching capacity in our other facilities, so that's, that's what this facility will accomplish for us.
So for my benefit, when you say processing, at what stage are we processing? Are we talking live animals?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, no, great question, great question. We are, we're.
No one else thought about that?
Yeah, no, no butchering. It's just, so, yeah, we buy beef, just like we would in the supermarket. You know, if we buy a roast in the supermarket, very much like that, like the big roast, we buy that in bulk, and we process that at our 619 facility, which is at the end of Industrial Park Drive. We turn that into logs, and it's basically like a formed meat block. And then from that, we take that product and we slice it. And when we slice it, we slice it proportion-controlled. So when we have Philly steaks, you know, we sell to our, to our owner-operator restaurants, that product is portion-controlled, so that way they're always serving the same-sized sandwich. And so we do all that work at our plants. But no, it's all, it's all, you know, it's actually pretty clean. I'd like you guys to come see it if you like, but this would be a state-of-the-art slicing and processing facility.
So in your presentation, you mentioned bringing jobs and income into our community. Tell me how you plan to do that.
Well, we're expanding our, you know, employee base by doing this, so, you know, we would be putting out. we'd be putting out job openings for the community. We use recruiters typically. And, you know, we either do in Industrial Park Drive. They do like a stoppage, they have like a bus that they bring in with like the full recruiting. We've done that a few times. But generally speaking, it'd be like processing jobs, slicing operators, forklift operators, administration roles. Get it all primarily through recruiters.
And how many jobs do you think there?
Tough to say. Could be anywhere from 30 to 50.
30 to 50.
Positions, yeah.
Okay.
It really just depends on the capacity. So, the facility is designed to, you know, have up to 50, 60 employees. At the beginning, it would be less and as we, as we grow, we would, we would scale up.
Okay. And then how would you target those jobs to our Yaton residents?
How? Well, we could do it through the paper, but the recruiters have their own methods. And then we typically pay the recruiters to post the jobs, do the screening interviews, make recommendations, and then we host the in-person interviews. That's how we've done it in the past, at least.
Okay. And then when, do we know, what was the business that was there previously?
They were like a design, like a studio design company. They made stages and lighting. They had, it was like a storage facility. They had some carpentry and things like that. That's, that's the extent at which I, I know their scope of work.
Okay. So, the, is anything that you're doing in your facility with that effect have an environmental impact on our, our community? Because it seems like the previous business was, didn't have much processing but more building, so.
Yeah, so from an environmental standpoint, again, I mean, are you asking me what, like, waste we would produce? Or is there?
So, waste, if there is any cooking, if there's smoke, if there are any filters, all of those things. Like what type of environment? What's going to be different in our community with you there now?
Got it. Arguably, and you want to just do it? Yeah, sure. So, the only thing that I would say is like a waste product is the washdown. So, when we wash our machines at the end of the shift, there's, there's, and no different than the sinks at home, you know, where there's like meat products and things like that going down the drains. We have a grease trap that we would install and the grease trap gets, collects all the salads and only water goes to, you know, the sewers. But that's the only, like I would say, environmental component. Everything else is, is in the facility and it's all raw. There's no cooking. There's, it's just slicing raw product and packaging it.
So, you have all of the proper like backflow prevention devices to keep your.
All that's going to be through the engineering process. All the proper backflow prevention. And we've done a geotechnical survey. We've done two environmental phases, one and two. We've gone through various surveying for structural support members and how, you know, the level of soil quality that's required in order to how, you know, how strong the, the structure needs to be. I mean, I'm probably not the present person to speak to it, but that's why we brought Mr. Simone here to come down. Yeah, all that, all that is part of the, the build process. And one of the benefits of doing a, a new construction is you go through the whole code process and determining process and construction process. So, everything would be up to a, a certain standard that doesn't exist today, quite frankly. The building is 65 years old. It's in no condition to support a business like ours. And that's the challenge we have is we, we, we want to expand in this area, this community, but we can't do it in, in the existing facility. Just for perspective, we, we actually can't hang anything from the, the ceiling because the, the, the way that it was designed back in the 60s wasn't strong enough to support anything being hung from the ceiling. They had never taken that into consideration. So, we wouldn't be able to hang any refrigeration, any paneling, you know, any of the processing components that we need.
And so, this would be your third facility in Yaton?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Do you have any community service that your company provides that's like specific to Yaton? Sounds like you're occupying a good deal of our industrial park real estate.
Yeah, not, not to my knowledge, not to my knowledge, other than just, just the, the, the job opportunities, really. And being good tenants of the, of the properties and good hosts, that's it.
Okay. Counselor Beatty, Chair of the Recreation Committee. I'm sure she could help you with that. Counselor Beatty, you had a question as well? Thank you.
I was saying, probably all of you are aware since your third building, there is no business tax here in Yaton. So, my question to you would be to think about how we can get back to the community outside of what you are doing. If there is a way for you to, in addition to possibly providing new jobs, we have things going on in our community, like some of the stuff we have coming up soon, to think of how you could benefit Yaton, especially since you're building so much here. So, just, and we'll be in contact, I'm sure, in the future about how you can get back sometime in the future.
Understood.
And.
Happy to help.
And I would love to see you like partner with kind of Vo-Tec in our area to see, you know, to build up the next generation. You know, it's a family business, I know, but like being able to expand maybe something with, you know, internships with our high school students. You know, the Delaware County Intermediate Unit serves the greater Delaware County. So, you would have access to, and, you know, just from a business perspective, you could have a, you know, a pipeline of employees and maybe pay your recruiter a little less.
I actually have a question.
I actually have two questions.
Thank you. My first question, how long will it take before this project is completed?
So, depending on when we start, it's about a year timeline for constructions?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. The second question is, would you be amenable to having some sort of job fair in Yaton?
Yes.
Okay. Because I believe we did that once before with another company that came in and they did a job fair here in the borough.
Okay.
Yeah.
We, we, we have done them before. I just don't, the exact process was we, we posted it in the newspaper. I just don't remember if it was Yaton or if it was Delaware County or some other newspaper. I have no idea. But I remember the truck coming and, yeah, we did it right on Industrial Park Drive. So, it was, it was pretty neat, but yes.
Okay. All right.
All right. So, make sure to leave us your information because I'd love to take a tour of your facility.
You said you're having to build the building. Is it going to be essentially the same physical size as the current building or?
It will be slightly, slightly less, actually.
Okay.
Using the size of the building.
You're not going to build a skyscraper?
Oh, that's a good idea.
I just want the.
No.
Okay. Basically the same-ish.
For these positions, what is the hourly wage? Talking about shifts, so how many shifts are you going to have there?
So, we're, we're planning on having two shifts, day shift and a, you know, labor shift. The exact hours aren't defined yet. Hourly wages are typically industry standard. I mean, our, our employees right now are anywhere from, forklift operators can be $18 an hour to $20 an hour and the general labor is $14, $15 an hour. That's pretty difficult in, in our, our space. So, and then the benefit that we have too, just for the record is, our, the facility being outside of Philadelphia, you know, you also have people that look at this area now as an opportunity for them to not have the city tax. So, it could bring more folks out of the city and into the area. Just for the record, it's always something that I like following. Very, very creative. Sure, yeah. All out of Philly, very merry.
All righty.
That was one of our, one of the important things for us was we did not want, we wanted to stay here. We, you know, we're, I would consider us still a small business, but we are growing and we have high hopes to continue growing. And so, you know, any, any partnership that we could do, I'm happy to discuss.
Okay. And we'll have one more question from the audience and then we'll get Counselor Peets.
What is like the demographics of your current employees?
Demographics?
Meaning like race, age, stuff like that? What?
Gender?
Gender?
Gender, I would say pretty balanced just from the locker rooms that I have. You know, I think it's the separation of locker rooms. Race, it's, it's diversified. I'd say, you know, it's, it's African-American, Latinos, whites.
Percentage, white.
Asian.
I'm talking about percentage, white.
I, I could not answer that. No.
Not even a guess?
Well, we wouldn't want them to guess. We would want some accurate information. I can say that I think that we, that we came here to present a project, not necessarily have our employment information readily available. But maybe you all can exchange information and you can, or, or you can direct to a website where that information might be available.
Absolutely. And I'm sure my HR general is thinking so as much better. I could tell you that, you know, our, our, our project is focused on expanding in Yaton. And so, that hopefully bring folks in permanently. So, that's, that's the best I can, I could share. Compared to the guests. Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Peets?
Just have a quick.
Have one more, Counselor.
Just have a quick statement to say that in 2004, when I got out the Marine Corps, your father, Odie, right?
Odie.
Yeah, Odie. That was my first job that I got after I got out of the Marine Corps. And so, I worked for you guys for a few months. So, I'm not familiar with how you guys are now. You guys obviously expanded since, but, you know, and just, you know, relay to your father that Jesse Peet, or Councilman Jesse Peet sends his regards.
I will, I will. Stop on by, he comes every once in a while. Yeah, please.
I'd love to see him.
I will. Jesse Peet?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. Counselor Peet will be recusing himself from any votes related to this incident. Full transparency. Thank you, thank you, Counselor Peet. All right.
I will say this, if you, if you've had a Philly steak, you know, in the area, you've definitely eaten one made at our facilities. So, we're really proud. It's all we do. We do it well. We've been doing it for 30 years and we're excited to just keep growing this. Leos, yeah, yeah, yeah. Leos has been our partner Steve for 15 years, yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would like to add to what Mr. Kans just said. I've been working with his dad for years. And years ago, I was involved in some work, some development at 619, in those quarters, when they started to discuss about the need to grow. And his dad stated they would like to stay in the area. And actually, it's, it's a nice idea. This is the atmosphere of this family. They want to get more involved, to, to stay, to develop in this community. And I think this is an asset rather than go somewhere.
If it's not an asset, we'll definitely make it an asset.
I have some interesting ideas.
Great.
So, again, I'm sorry not all of you are able to see this. So, anyway, the existing building has been standing there for a long time. As Mr. Kans said, needs some, some renovation in order to be able to be used to the future needs. So, there will be this plan, is a site plan, which indicates what the building and site will look, look like from the outside. So, the old building has some non-conformities, let's call it that way, with the current codes. For example, there is a code that requires the building to occupy not more than 30% of the site area. The existing building is more than that. It is actually 55%. And so, we'll be reducing the size a little bit. So, we are not increasing this non-conformity. There are other two non-conformities. One is the front yard, the long roads. And one is the side yard, which is down here. And they are never less than what is required. We are not increasing. We are not adding to this non-conformity. One other thing, you can see in this plan that we are redoing, revising the, the open area here for powder, for loading. Right now, there isn't enough. We are also improving the parking facility. There are also existing parking spaces along Providence Road that are actually mostly inside the site, but partly outside. They will continue to be used. We also will be adding some landscaping, like some green space to the site. Site area and water facilities. There are a site area store and a water main already in Industrial Park Drive. So, the building is already connected to them. There is no need to change anything at this point. So, we'll keep using them. The bigger issue is storm management. There is currently no storm, storm management facility on the site because back in the 60s, when it wasn't required, so nobody did that. Even though we are reducing the size of the building and reducing the total imperviousness, we are proposing storm management. Let me show you the plan.
Also, just to clarify, we have, at the Borough Engineer, we have reviewed the plans twice and at this point, they haven't resolved our comments. So, anything he's talking about has been, you know, revised and reviewed, just to clarify.
Counsel, there is a full report for you, for your review. I think everything's been satisfied by our Borough Engineer at this point, at this endpoint.
This plan here is the grading plan and the storm warning plan. The other work files, details, whatnot, I can show you. If you can see this patch area here, that represents the proposed storm facility that we are proposing that, which will actually be employed. Lineup water inside that bed, that bed. And then it will be covered by pavement and you will not see anything other than tops of manholes, inlet, stuff like that. So, the lineup will come, will go through inlet, area drains, trench drains, whatever. And for instance, here are the loading docks. And there will be slots because the bottom of the sofas will need to be four feet below the floor. That's the difference between the size, you know, the height of the truck and, and the bedding level. So, we will need to drain them and get the water out into this bed. So, the water will go into here. One of the issues is that there is no existing storm sewer in this region down here. This is the Yaton Community Park and there is no storm sewer there. There is a storm sewer way down below, but we are far away from that. So, right now, everything simply washes onto the park. So, basically, this bed is designed so that all the, or the vast majority of storms, and we're talking about statistical storms, most of the storms that kill are, you know, what is called one-year storm, two-year storm. And they happen many times, right? A hundred-year storm is something that rarely occurs. It's not necessarily once in a hundred years, but it's rare, all right? So, only in such a big storm, a hundred years, slightly, fifty years, there will be some water that will come out. And it will come out, there are three stormy, it's located here. The water, so those circumstances. In such a big storm, the water will lie to the top, spill out of the bed. It will not cause any effect. And then everything else, where they. It will not cause any effect, and that everything else will integrate into the top. It will be stored in that bed and then go.
And and thank you. Thank you for that information. I think if we have this information with the engineer, one thing that we most certainly can do and will do, I think counsel satisfied with the report that they have, is place this on our website, allow our residents to review it and offer comment before next Thursday's meeting.
And if anybody has a question, I'd be happy to.
Yep.
So. Just in case, when construction find out that over the next, it will be basically.
Sir, sir, I think what the Borough Manager is saying, all those provisions have been vetted through the engineer as jurisdiction over those provisions. So we're covered. So thank you very much.
I'm happy to hear, however, how seriously you're taking the stormwater issue because many buildings and industrial parks that are running some pumps out of their basements into the streets. And as you pointed out, there's no sewer, stormwater inlet. And water from some well is not supposed to be getting drained into the stormwater inlet anyway, because we're in a creek watershed. And we know from the state of the country's hangouts.
So that is why we are.
So very pleased with.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Make sure you get us certain information so we can schedule a tour. All right. We will be moving on to our manager's report.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have a whole lot because the actual directors of departments, but we will be reporting out the only the major thing that I would like to discuss or for your consideration. At next week's meeting, there will be an application to use the substation parking lot for the Yen Economic Development Committee to host a shredding event.
Hey, I'm sorry.
Shredding.
Shredding?
Shredding.
Shredding.
I'm sorry. But the application, once submitted, will be disseminated to all members of council for your consideration. Meetings are now on Zoom, both caucus and legislative meetings. Tonight's meeting is actually on Zoom. So people who aren't able to come into the borough, the link will always be on the site in advance for you to participate via Zoom. So you can see what's happening here in real time. We're encouraging residents and asking residents for patience as we're in the process of getting all of our social media sites up and running. As some of you may know, we had four Facebook pages, two Twitter accounts, three Instagrams.
And a portrait and a fan tree.
So so we're we're streamlining all that stuff so that we can have the official outlets for for the Borough of Yen. So we ask for your patience. Everything else that I have to discuss really is related to legal matters and personnel matters that I would like to schedule an executive session with the full body of council in the near future so that we can discuss. There is my report, Madam President.
One question.
Yes, ma'am.
The shredding event, we already have an event through Public Works, correct?
Yes, but this is something that they specifically want to do. Again, I told them that I will bring it to you for your consideration.
Okay. All right. We are moving on to our solicitor's report.
We are working, working there on excellent idea, but they've been remiss. Four people have worked this for just. Kind of that written up, I think you want to try to bring it up.
Yep.
Is ready. Okay, so that's going to be it. Is there any other words you want to look at?
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot.
How do you do? Um, you know, I'll give the issue to the structural department. So I'd be speak to the code officer when he left. And I think I just want to take my notes.
I mean, the situation now is that property has gotten, because there's there's a young thing of option. We did ask him to get a price for about a mountain building down. And what he was going to do is.
And and that solicitor and I were waiting for who's the chief of local community was hired to tell recently to who.
Report that we had, I believe, on Yen Avenue or Church Lane.
No, Church.
Yen Avenue years ago. So we were reaching out to that vendor. We're just waiting for a quote.
And we have communicated. I've sent several notices to the owner, and he has not responded. So I think we're going to take next steps on that.
Okay, but we're going to take the steps, correct? We're we're going to take the steps.
Well, the steps would be to condemn the building.
Right.
Do you have the step we would like to take? Would you want more information? That will be the next step.
I think we should, like, get a report so we can, you know.
An engineer's report?
Is it an engineer's report?
We have an engineer's report.
Yeah, maybe.
It's not, it's uninhabitable.
Well, then, then it is what it is, right?
I think the next step is do we have to condemn?
The next step is that we have to condemn, which in that process was was going to start prior to the department. But we do also, we're waiting for the quote. The last time we did, utilized county aid dollars, their demo dollars to take the parts of down. But we need documentation before we can submit that application to the county.
Right, right.
That's what we need.
All right.
We need a report to the value and cost to take the building down.
Okay.
That would be a smarter first step and before you condemn, because you may have thought they could achieve that.
Okay.
But that's how we start.
All right, but we're going to, we're doing it. We're actively working on getting whatever we need to.
Actually, I'll tell you something. Sean Kilkenny had to have to talk to that code officer almost every day before he left.
Right.
And he had like the list of things that he checked up on. There's a list. There's also the cemetery. So there's many things we were looking at. That was the number one.
Right.
I think it's the report. And and Nefes, how can we get that report?
We we have that, Megan. Do we know? 7:25 firm?
7:28.
I'm aware of that. I was.
Joe did. Joe did that report, right?
Recently, from how old is this property? Because there was one we did right before the holidays.
This is from October, Mike?
Yes.
I will have to go back and review what we did and did not do. We could obviously generate a condition report if we need to.
I think it needs to be amended because I think it was at the fence of we need to condemn the property.
Okay. We'll review. Yeah.
There's definitely a structural engineer who wants this job.
Yes, there is. But we need the va, we need the cost. We need to know what it will cost to take the building down. How do we get that? How do we get that?
That's the code that we're willing.
That's what we need. But we don't even have anyone to ask to do that.
No, we we definitely asked me.
Excuse me. I apologize. That's where I go.
So we are actively taking the steps to get the information that we need to keep this process moving forward.
Yes.
May I ask a question? So is the owner involved with this or or just totally uninvolved?
No, the owner, for the most part, has cut communication with the borough. He turned it over to the insurance company. The insurance company walked away as well. The last that we heard from the owner is that the property was put on the market for sale. He had two potential investors that was going to come in, purchase the property from him, and they had the means to fix it. We can't wait for that. So that's when we started this process.
Right. Now, now, do we have to, since he is not being cooperative, insurance is not going to be involved in order to step in and then condemn it because it's a hazard now? Do we have to take it over as eminent domain? Is that something that the borough needs to do?
That's what the borough needs to do.
Okay. And then, and I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, then we would be able to apply for grant funding from the county to pay for, to cover having it demolished. Okay. What about the building on Chester Avenue?
Was that 1100 Chester Avenue? It's like a mini strip mall?
Yes.
What he did was he told me, he told the owner to put up construction fencing around that build, around that area that was supposed to occur. That's what that's what he told me just yesterday before he left. So I will make sure that happened.
Well, we were told that because it has no roof and the bricks are not sturdy, that that it's in danger of collapsing as well. So I don't.
Maybe that would require probably, I don't know. Do we have a report on that property? 1100?
So 1100 Chester was part of a band development, but that is currently on hold because of sewer capacity. I was not aware of the demolition.
That was a conversation with Mr. Kilkenny, and so we should circle back. I wasn't a part of their last conversation.
My last conversation was he was going to put construction fencing or tell the owner construction fencing around it because it was a danger.
So the construction fencing is a temporary fix, a very temporary fix, a fix that that I wouldn't even call it a fix. I would say a temporary measure until we can take appropriate action. A fence should be up for no more than seven days. A fence should go up tomorrow, and a fence should be there no more than seven days, and we should have some type of resolution. This building is caving in. There is no roof. It is structurally unsafe. So we need to, we need to do something about it immediately. And we're not waiting for someone to get hurt for this to happen.
Mr. Code Officer?
Something here, I'm going to do this at the director's. It says, uh.
I'm sorry. Could you introduce yourself, please?
Uh, I'm Secretary Andy Gugliano. Uh, I work for you guys.
No, it's nice to meet you, Mr. Gugliano. I don't believe I've ever met you in person. I was, okay, hello.
Hello. So the thing is here, that 1100 1100 East Avenue property posted a notice now that lies in the matter of the paradiem issue of February. If not, if she conducts the process will suffer. So I'm not sure if they will be seen yet. So I guess I'll check with Mr. Wormley tomorrow. And I guess she starts the process then with the director's.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. So so solicitor?
Yes.
So I guess at this point, we just have to join, you know, get together and let the left hand know what the right hand is doing.
That's true.
Because.
I did speak to the code officer just before he left on his, uh, confirmation.
Oh, okay.
And and Madam Solicitor, maybe tomorrow, we'll schedule a meeting with Mr. Wormley and Ms. Criswall, myself, and we can make sure that everything is well appropriate.
We all on the same wavelength here. Yeah. I think those are the only two buildings that were like priority.
Right, right.
Right, yeah. That's not something.
I don't think we can say that here. I can tell you, but not right here.
Okay. All right.
Is there a chance for your report?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So just just in summary, 7:25 and 1100, 7:25 firm? Is it 7:25 or 8?
7:25.
7:25 firm and 1100 Chester Avenue. We should have some answers.
Back next, we'll report back next Thursday for the post.
Okay, thank you. Next, we are moving to our tax collector's report. You can report from there. It's more convenient. Your question.
Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
First, I want to report that the books for 2023 are closed. Any other persons who have not paid their 2023 taxes, they are now considered delinquent, and you'll be hearing from the collection agencies. The, before the books close, however, from January 13th to January 31st, we collected $7,996.29. For the year from February 5th, 2023, until January 31st, 2024, we collected $6,287,101.37. The 2024 deals are out. They're in the mail. Some of you may have already received your bill. Your, if you, if your mortgage company is supposed to pay your bill, please call your mortgage company and ask them if they received it and make sure they're doing what they need to do to pay it. We can't control what mail they receive. We can only control that we send it out. Please note, tax office does not accept cash payments. Lots of people want to bring me cash. I don't even know why they walk around with that much money, cash. But I'm not receiving cash. You need to have something that you can backtrack to. And you can't backtrack the cash that I spent at bounce calls. Make sure you include your folio number on your payments. Bounce checks, checks require a fee of $50 payable to the borough. If you leave a payment in the nail slot on the door, make sure that you leave your name and phone number on it. Borough tax payments cannot be accepted in installments. The tax office is open as it has been for the last two years, Mondays and Wednesdays, 10 to 2. And I reported last time, but I want to report again about the property tax or rent rebate eligibility has been raised for the homeowner and the renter to $45,000 a year. And the maximum rebate has also been raised to $1,000. This rebate is good for seniors and disabled that fit the qualifications. Any questions?
This is on a priority metal tax collector. The number you gave was the total amount collected that included real estate tract.
Real estate tract.
Right. I don't want anyone to think that we collected $6 million in taxes.
Okay, I can break it down for you next time.
Thank you very much. Is that in your report?
That is my report.
Thank you. Our engineer's report. The chatty school kids in the back.
Uh, good evening. I have two items. First one, so four, four, four industrial, just confirming you don't need them here next week for any additional questions. If you're going to vote, I just want to make sure, because I will tell them if so.
So I don't believe that it was, what are we voting on?
The approval of the land development.
Okay. All right. Or we'll let you know midweek after we have a chance to
That's fine.
review it in front of us.
That's fine.
All right.
I'll let you know. And then I believe we'll have to do a resolution. I'll work with manager and the solicitor to do that if we're moving forward next week.
Yes.
And then the following items are just four upcoming grants I want to bring to your attention. If there is a project that you feel fits the demographic and you would want to move forward with an application. The first one is the Transportation and Community Development Initiative. Those grants are due March 27. And the applications are geared towards either transportation improvements, but a lot of times studies towards transportation, or ordinance-based updates. So I think there was a few asks of that, so I wanted to put that out in front of you. That opportunity is currently open. The second one is Natural Fish and Wildlife Foundation. Those grants are due March 21st, and there's opportunities conserve, register. And there's opportunities conserve, restore, and protect habitats. The next one is the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Grant, which is due April third. That is currently where the community park grant was funded, a portion of that grant was funded through. Um, and that is for park and recreation, land acquisition, trails, and planning. And the last one is the Department of Community and Economic Development Act thirteen grants, which are due May thirty-first. And opportunities are available for greenways, parks, trails, and watershed restoration and flood mitigation, which we did not write up. So I wanted to bring that up. Some of them are months away, but if there's opportunities you want to explore, you can start those applications.
Okay. Are there, um, thank you for, for letting us know what the, what they are. I do think that it might be helpful if um, maybe there were some recommendations that came along with them. For instance, you know, like I, when you say transportation, you know, that doesn't, that, that doesn't quite resonate if you, if you kind of have a bird's eye view of what's going on in our town. And you say, you know, that maybe like the transportation can help you revive your bus shelters or to do to this about what, what's necessary. But um, I don't think that we are, we're able to. I mean, of course, some, some of them, Community and Economic Development, absolutely, we can come up with some ideas for those. But I think what we're looking for more so is recommendations. I thank you for identifying them, but how about this transportation grant can help you do this or?
Absolutely. Um, so ordinance updates is, I will say from here, is, is usually where those go to. Um, so updates to um, a comprehensive plan, um, or a thorough wide study of something. So uh, I could certainly put together, we'll send this in an email, um, with some additional information on each of them. You know, if there's a resolution, if there's a match required, um, with more detail, and then we'll break down some possible uh, applications as well.
Okay. So I can just give you kind of a heads up. I do know that, you know, we, you, you've heard us say, and heard our residents speak over one or the million times about the, the traffic going over the bridge. You know, so if that, if one of these is going to be able to assist us with that, you know, you know our, our dilemma at McDayton Church. So if one of these would be applicable to, to that situation.
I want to make sure. McDayton Church, we're talking about those improvements that are already happening or is there further ones that are not aware?
I mean, the, it's because it's not done, you know, if, if it's, if there's something else. You know where our problem spots are.
Um, so I will clarify, the second one, the Natural Fish and Wildlife Foundation, um, if possible, you already have a grant for partial funding for the Blessed Ranch Dream Restoration, which is one of the grants we talked about last time, which I hopefully, um, you guys got the exhibit of the proposed improvements. We could submit for additional funding so that hopefully you would not have to pay any of that project. Um, so we could try and pay you back two grants together. Um, that would be our goal if, you know, that's a possible project. So I'll make sure I outline all of that.
Perfect.
Forward, the transportation project grants, um, usually come out more towards June and July. I know that there's one due July thirty-first that is a really good one that we currently have a pending application for the intersection right out here, um, which they haven't announced yet. So.
Okay.
Based upon that, we'll wait to hear a little bit further and.
Yeah, because I mean, if you're just waiting on us to, 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 to try to identify, you know, there, there are only five of us.
And I think I'll put these out here if there are areas that I'm unaware of or we haven't talked about, but I feel like by now we do have a good understanding. And we'll definitely um, provide further detail or recommendations.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Question. What like, is there a website or something where you can look these grants up to see exactly what they are?
I wish. I really do. Um, no. Uh, so these are all depending upon, uh, there, uh, some of these are state-funded grants, some of them are county-funded grants. Some of them, um, are not reoccurring every year. Um, so TCDI is, is one of them that only comes around every two years. Sometimes the funding is, is focused towards a different area of the state. Um, so unfortunately not. I will say the, the, the last one here, the Act thirteen, there are six programs posted under that. So that website, if you go to the, if you search DCD Act thirteen, that, that is very comprehensive and it outlines all the opportunities. Same thing with the previous one, DC and RC two D two, the website is very comprehensive. But you have to dive in individual websites. There is not um, a gray list somewhere, unfortunately.
Gotcha, gotcha. Thank you.
Megan's our list.
Unfortunately, that is, that is true.
All right. Thank you very much.
No problem.
All right, can we, um, which ones do you need to get done so you can be executed? Finance, okay. All right.
Uh, the finance report is just that we are asking for consideration for February eighth payments. Also asking for consideration for January twenty twenty-four cash balance report. Asking council for consideration for the sale of the delinquent real estate taxes for twenty twenty-three. So those resolution, that resolution was actually sent to you this evening for your review. It is an annual sale that we do with municipal revenue services that will net the borough its real estate delinquent taxes upfront versus spread out over time. Uh, there is my report and Madam President, I have to.
Thank you.
May be excused.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, we are ordinance zoning.
And tradition. Um, so I got occasion, work was on Chester Avenue, uh, in the springs, we're ready to explore. One hundred Lincoln Avenue, replace ride that's initially career of existing zone, uh, put a pool and situated, also can for shed that's been approved. Uh, hot spots in the borough have been nine hundred wire or casting public work goes. The monitor in Pico and has actually been uh, corrected from our understanding. Frank Francis, uh, the same for the, uh, for the church, uh, for the graffiti without renewal of all the fallings. And one nineteen, twelve nineteen long acre, uh, understood the working will clean up the property. Uh, more notices it happens than elsewhere to uh, Chicago. Which goes out eleven hundred Chester Avenue. Action items, Rachel Home Run, work at Fitzgerald for the best side, uh, laboratory. Uh, one of the plans is a medical review that we improve. Uh, for a board of few, uh, you got to serve out. The new Nelson, we must make their, uh, the record section, uh, the three apples of the priority, I guess. Um, fire related issues regarding busting the goods department, uh, four thirty highway, uh, they don't have fire. House is uninhabitable until renovation. Uh, advocates for rental complexes have uh, took us out of renewal. Handicap, uh, renewal letters, base and out the door at first. Uh, needs with one several zoning officers, even forty members for planning commission. Ordinance change, new ordinance for streetcarlets for twelve to five, and most stores today. They probably can make uh, maintenance abadements. The date is seven hundred and seven hours thirty cents of the local January. Proven public revenue to the month of January was thirty-three thousand one hundred fifty dollars thirty-eight cents. Worked with those forty seven violations, uh, twelve resales. Sentations issued thirty, request draft to thirteen. Vehicle noise is one, then everything else one. Insurance ring, contract registration, the building permits, twenty black, uh, twenty seven, mechanical three. Uh, planning and subdivision, is there any use permits free, handicap one? Uh, we've got only a couple of two six.
All right. I actually have a question.
Councilor Robout? Um, the law, uh, law maker, full of all that.
Yeah.
Twelve nineteen, that's another one. Um, so I heard you say something about, uh, uh, citations were issued for the homeowner to clean up or something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is what, th- th- this is what, the house is literally falling down. So why are we asking the homeowner to go back into it and clean it out? Or to be near the structure at all? The, the house literally has a tree, it's really.
So I, from my understanding, which I don't know much about this problem, because it was, it was an ongoing issue before I was hired back in July. Uh, so I really hadn't had any dealings with, with the long being a problem, and it has been Inspector White and Director Stokes and uh, Inspector Wardly helping out with those guys. So I don't know too much about it. I'm going to go about what's here and what's left.
She was given a deadline, she had to go to bed to get a quote, to get repairs. But repair price she got, she can't be told, the Mr. Stokes, was like forty-two hundred dollars to make the repairs. That was the number he told me. I don't know, he told me this on Wednesday.
Yeah, so I don't have, I don't have any number figures here, and I, I wasn't really that information. But I can talk with Ms. Criswell and Inspector Wardley, who are overseeing the department, telling it being out. And he tried to get you guys to answer this as possible, get back to you, Vice President Robout.
No, don't get, I mean, I, yeah, I mean, bottom line is you really don't know about it. But this has been a longstanding issue, but my concern is you see the back of the house with the tree stump and the bricks are away from the actual structure. So we're telling the homeowner to go in there and clean it up?
Hire someone to make the repairs, which is what she was giving a deadline of the day. And trying to call back with the price, which I guess is wrong, and that's, that's not your fee. So that's, so and, and that was where they got that. That was the landlady's communication, but I can holler.
Yeah, so I mean, are we going to wait for the house to just go ahead and collapse? Should we wait for that?
She, she condemned that too. And also, I also, um, we're also, you're monitoring also Holy Cross Cemetery, they repaired to the fence. They had communicated as a new owner of the cemetery, they were starting to make repair to the fence, but you have to really keep on them constantly.
So are we, have we started? Um, I, I heard you mention a few citations and I'm hearing that it, are you saying that there's, there's one citation or? Because what we, our instructions at our last meeting was that if there are especially repeat offenders, that the viol- that the citations are daily. So that they're compounded, so they can get to the point that will allow us to be able to sue in court.
There are citations issued, and I understand, because I, I've never seen what these, or the way Mr. Stokes thought of this property. Looks like court cases, one that had been, one court case issued for the inspectors to go to the out of thirty, sent to the courthouse, wait, I guess, waiting to go to court now.
Okay.
I guess they're waiting for days. Uh, that's just for the month of January, they said.
So I mean, the, the number, my, my question is about the, how often we're citing. So if someone is in, so let me finish, please. The, if there's someone who's inconsistent, non-compliance, that they are being cited daily. For instance, the, the property at ten twenty-four Church Lane, is that the justice that, that you mentioned? That property should be cited daily for the graffiti. Like every day, every time it should be cited until it's gone. So that it can amass an amount that we're able to take action against the property. Because just living here with the blighted community is not, it's, it's not going to keep your job either, you know, it's not going to keep us. We're residents, you know, so it's not going to, it's, that's not how we maintain the quality of life in this community. So we need those properties cited daily. And then we need your office to take action against these properties that need to be condemned. And if that means improved communication between you and Mr. Kilkeny, then that needs to happen, because we've had these conversations with them as well. So before our next meeting.
Yes.
We have three properties that we need to, we need to know what the timeline is for them to be condemned. And then when we return next week for our legislative session, any of those repeat offenders, we will expect that they have been cited daily. So that would be the report that whomever comes from the code department needs to make sure that we, and if we need to abate, then we do what we need to do. But we cannot allow them to, to have these properties just disintegrate in front of our eyes. That's taking all, that's taking all of our value down. Next comes crime. And, and we don't want to go with, with next after that. Okay? All right. We're all on the same team. Let's work together. All right. Thank you. Thanks for sitting in the hot seat. Yes, thank you. You're clear about a little bit. All right, thanks. Um, Public Works? That's the entrance of our community. You know, and what, what's right now at the entrance of our community is a building with no roof and a building ripe with graffiti. Like with this, that's, that's not okay. That's, that's not okay. All right.
Well, I mean, I mean, we have to be, you know, reasonable and fair across the board. You know, if the solicitor's office isn't getting the proper information, they can't.
Right.
They can't do what they need to do with misinformation. You understand what I'm saying? So we got to start in the office here.
Absolutely.
But those three properties, we should be much closer to a resolution than.
I believe when we spoke with Mr. Kilkeny, there was thirty days. That's what'd be, just us. We're, by next week, it'll be thirty days. All right. Um, Public Works?
And those properties have been abated. The graffiti's been removed more than once. Uh, will be three times this month abated. So we're in the process. Like I say, fines every week, every day. Makes sense.
Okay. Okay.
I'll make sure that Andrew and the rest of the department works with me and we're on these three properties at least. It's, they're it. They're our fair.
Okay.
People say, absolutely. He turned it toward you.
Talking to the mic.
Talking to the mic. Talking to the mic, Mike.
All right. So I, my report is standing with all of yous. I just have a few um, updates for some dates. Our e-waste, February twenty-third, between eight and two. Uh, our yard waste will be starting back up March eighth, between eighth and two. We do not have an e-waste on Good Friday for the holiday. Our project with Aqua is ongoing. We've had small complaints about their progress. Their ditches, nothing major. Yaden Avenue is a bumpy ride and it's going to be that way until it settles. There's not much we can do about it. They're doing the best they can. Uh, I monitor it every week. Our curb cuts, ADA ramps, handicap ramps have started as of Monday. There's a process going down, uh, West Cops Creek Parkway, Robin Road. Um, there's a few others I can't remember right now, but they're in the process and we're getting them done. Uh, storm shores are being maintained. We did have some emergency callouts for rainstorms in January. Our little snowstorm that we had, God bless us all, we're not getting any more. Back to that. Police vehicles have been maintained. Inspectors are upgraded. Um, our COVID nineteen spray has been done every week. Gate of Bear Hall, Public Works and Library has not stopped since COVID started. So we're still in compliance with that. Um, any other questions?
I do have one question. Um, on West Cops Creek, uh, I'm noticing in the park, and I know we're not responsible but, for the park, but it's facing us and it's ugly. It's just dead trees that may have fell and it looked like.
Yesterday.
I'm sorry?
Yesterday, we cleaned them dead trees up from the storm prior in January, all the trees that fell.
Mm-hmm.
We pushed them back as far as we can so that residents can walk through, walk their dogs. I have contacted, um, the Parks Department. Those dead trees, they will not remove for us. They say it's a natural decaying, um, process, and they want to leave them like that. And they told us they're absolutely not going to move them. So we pushed them back off the sidewalks so people could walk their dog.
No, they're not in the side, they're not on the sidewalks. They're actually in the park, but it's right there at the entrance of the park.
Connell, between Connell and Circus, we moved that yesterday. I'm telling you, we moved them back.
Even further.
Oh, no, they're gone. They're in, they're way back in the distance.
Okay. Yeah, because it's just, it's unsightly.
We did Chester Avenue where the tree fell.
Mm-hmm.
Pushed that all back. It's unsightly and people walk their dogs there, people go out and see the park. It's, we took care of it. Take a look at it tomorrow.
Okay.
You may have missed it.
Okay.
I also have a question. So the e-waste, um,
So the e-waste, um, dates and times you mentioned, will they be up on the website?
They are on the website, they'll be on the website very shortly, but they're definitely in the, uh, the pretty calendar.
Okay, great.
And if you have any questions, just call, they're always on our, our answering machine at the shop.
Okay, great, and I have one more question, I'm not sure if it's under your purview or not, but there have been quite a few instances of gas leaks. So, uh, because we had one, matter of fact, on, on my street, nine hundred block of Myra. And then yesterday is, uh, was around Cypress and Whitby area that they closed off. So, you know, is, um, a comprehensive study being done throughout the borough? Because, you know, these pipes and are old, you know, or we're at the point where they really need to be looked at and replaced.
Pico on that, the one on, uh, Holly Road or, uh, Myra Avenue has been there for, I, I gotta tell you a year. And after the last call that went out, I called a gentleman from the gas company and pretty much told him that our mayor was very upset that we were left in the dark and they were not treating us very nicely and they were out the next day to find this gas leak and they found the gas. So we have to, let's be a little nasty today.
Be persistent.
This is where we live and you guys have to take care of us, so. And the other one, the gas company, Awiffia and Cypress, they did that by themselves. They, there was a mismarking of, uh, gas lines and they broke that themselves. But we were out there, myself and chief fire company, and evacuated probably about twelve houses until they fixed it. And, um, gas is tough, gas is old in, in the town, so we're on it the best we can. It's a utility.
That's, that's a good point, we've had a lot of gas issues. And that big one up by, uh, Grace Court there, the, uh, the apartment, um, uh, yeah, we've had a lot. So we should, um, kind of hold that quo, whoever, or come to the bottom of that infrastructure of, uh, of our gas mains.
I don't know where.
It seems like it's popping up a lot.
It is happening a lot, you don't want to happen what happened over there.
Yeah, and, uh, yeah, because there was another one a day or two ago, I think.
Yeah, we mentioned it, so, so once you speak with Pico, can you kind of circle back with us next week? Or I'll see for your report?
They have a plan, I don't know.
Or even though of existing ones, because it seems like the, the, you know, it's, it's a surprise to us when we hear about it. But if they're already there and they have a list of them and it's low priority because it's so many parts per million, then we should, we should have, you know, we should have that information at least available. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, Public Safety?
Uh, before the chief comes, uh, I just want to let the public know that, uh, we did restart our public safety meetings, uh, last month. Uh, so all the departments heads, this, this on Zoom are present. Um, the police chief, uh, director of Public Works, Mike Rufus Code. Um, and we, we'll have also the, the head of, uh, there's a new head of, uh, new chief of, uh, Fire Department. Um, so the next meeting will be on Saturday, March twenty third. And it should be on the website, the date should be on the website. But we, anyone could join or any resident can, can tune in, it's, it's a public meeting. All right, so if you have, if you just want to glean or listen in or you have suggestions or any kind of contribution, yeah, uh, everyone's free to, to attend. And all the login information is also self-contained in the website, so. So it was great first meeting and want to thank, uh, my co, co-host here, Jesse Peets. And, uh, with that being said, get the chief.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
The Yaden Police Department responded to thirteen hundred and nine calls for service in the month of January. We had five criminal arrests in the month of January. There was one for firearms not to be carried without a permit. One individual was arrested for involuntary deviant sexual intercourse with a minor. There was an arrest for DUI, there was an arrest for aggravated assault, we also had an arrest for burglary. Uh, there was eleven traffic citations issued in the month of January. There were six hundred and seventy-three parking tickets issued in the month of January. For summary arrests, they were two for harassment and two for disorderly conduct. As the mayor said, we had a public safety meeting with Counselor Peets, the co-chair, it went really well. Uh, I met with the Savage Group and Madam Vice President, you were talking about the entryway. And I explained to them, the Savage Group is a group of individuals that are, uh, prior addicted individuals to narcotics or drugs and other, and alcohol and also unhoused individuals, they were unhoused. And I explained to them the problem we have on the Philadelphia side coming in. Even, and they're going to actually go down and talk to the individuals down there to try to get them help to see what they can do for them. I've also talked to Restore to try to maybe May Day to actually go down there. And I spoke to Mike at Public Works to team up maybe a day in May, you know, May Day, Earth Day. We actually go down there and try to clean up our side of the waterway down there because it's a mess. Um, I've talked to the individuals countless times, when you reported, they were camping down there and they know not to, unfortunately, they know not to camp on our side because it's Delaware County. But Philadelphia side, as I explained several times, and I've reached out to the parks and recs, they, they, they'll let them camp there. We have an ordinance, they cannot camp in public parks. So that's why we'll move them out, but it's still an eyesore, so. We're, I work, I'm working with that group to hopefully work together. Um, with everything yesterday, I actually got a really good call today, a call that, um, turned my frown upside down. I got a call from Madam Speaker, Joanna McClintock. She said, Chief, I understand you, you all went through a lot yesterday, if you need anything, blah, blah, she, but I have good news. And I said, what's that? And I forgot, I met with her in May, so this is all my, this should have been reported, I held it up. The police department's getting a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in a grant, meeting with Madam Speaker back in May, talking or telling her we need it. So from twenty twenty-three to now, because this is, these are all grants that are actually, this was the grant that was written in twenty twenty-three, so it's on a twenty twenty-three budget, because as you know, the state did not pass a budget. General Shapiro signed it a couple, about a month or so ago. Uh, so that was a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars from that grant. We also got ten thousand seven hundred dollars from a federal grant for overtime. We got a forty-five hundred dollar grant from the gaming grant. We also got ten thousand dollars towards our accreditation from the district attorney. So last year, calendar year twenty twenty-three, the police department, we brought in a hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred dollars in grant money. And, um, and to that, to the grant thing, we actually, we're hosting a grant school next week. We have two-day course that we're hosting, so we'll get two free seats, which is a six hundred hour value. So we're hosting it in the auditorium, already can, um, clear it with the borough manager. So we get two free seats, so we're going to have two people, they'll still have patrol duties, but looking at grants. We're writing grants for as much as we can. I said, I don't care if it's basket weave and equipment, we realize we need shields after what happened yesterday, so we're going to look at grants for that, helmets, whatever we can, if you can let us know, we're going to keep pushing the grants to try to get as much funding as we can.
Doing well with that too, chief.
And that would be my report.
So what are you going to use your lateral money for?
What, what, the, uh, the hundred and thirty-eight?
Yeah.
That's going to be two vehicles, glad you asked, Madam President, two vehicles, help with the accreditation process. And it's also going to help our body cam, because we're, we're having issues with our body cam. The, the previous grant was for the Motorola, but we're actually looking at Axon Body Cam, which is actually the Mercedes of body cams, they're also the tasers we utilize too, Axon, so. We're, we're looking at that, but, but, um, yeah, I'm, uh, yeah, I was, you know, obviously with the situation, we were all kind of melancholy down there and I'm running around the station going, we just got a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, which is, that, and that's all, you know, the speaker, it's just building those, building those relationships. So to that end, we will be inviting the speaker, I'll let everyone know. I had the opportunity to meet with the speaker and I was invited to a, um, a show in which you're going to probably say, why would cops go to this aftershock? Which was an unbelievable movie, it talked about the infant mortality rate amongst African-American women. And I saw it this weekend and I kind of, you know, sitting in the audience, I raised my hand and I was talking about how, you know, we, we need to get more involved with, you know, more holistic approach to law enforcement. And they're like, would you mind Yaden? And I'm like, so I kind of voluntold us, I'm like, yeah, we'll, we'll do one, especially with the speaker. So I'll let everyone know, um, we're going to, we're going to host it. It's, it's a two-hour movie and with the, with the kind of a question and answer. And it was, it really opens your eyes, it really does with the inadequacies in healthcare. And, um, having a wife and two daughters, you know, you, you realize, so. Because if men had to give birth, we won't have any children, I'll tell you that right now, so.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thanks, chief, appreciate it.
Counselor Beatty?
So now we are fully staffed, I would like to see, so I wish to actually comment now, I would like to see more police joy, traffic controlling, for the aisles and intersections than I always saw about my home avenue, Union Avenue, of course, Family Road is like a regular speed up there. And Church Lane, after hitting five, so about six.
To your point, Counselor, and I should have brought it up, there, the officers are still in the ten-week training program in the field and we, we adhered to that policy for insurance purposes. Once they're out, they'll be on their own, but it's already, the, the radio's already starting to pick up. Like they're already, like honestly, like they're, yeah, they're, they're already starting to pick up. It's great to hear it still on the radio, so, thank you.
Well, and to piggyback off of that, uh, Counselor Beatty, uh, what she just said, uh, we had a conversation the other day when there was a situation, uh, on Cypress Street and there were four police vehicles that stopped a vehicle and they were actually searching the vehicle. I thought they were our, our cops, but they were all Philly. And we knew nothing about it, so we had a whole block filled with Philadelphia police officers and in our house and we don't even know about it.
And not to, the problem is, and I don't want to, and I'm not a radio guy, but I'll geek out on this, there's a thing called eight hundred megahertz, Philadelphia's on an eight hundred megahertz. And what's that does, that's encrypts the state, so you can't, you know, if you get in an accident in Philly and all of a, well, actually, you get an accident here, you see all the records flying in, because they can, they can monitor with a scanner. So Philly switched eight hundred megahertz, we're still on a four hundred thou, four hundred band megahertz. We're actually switching our radios now, Delco's switching, it's a whole county switch out. So once that, maybe there'll be interoperability where we can get on, J-Ban is the emergency ban in Philly. Before I got here and years ago, when Philly was still on the four hundred megahertz, they could actually monitor J-Ban. So if you would hear something kickoff, they could, you know, now it's, for example, the other day there was a stolen car. So I see it and I'm like, forty-six oh one, I'm behind that stolen car, it's going into Philly. Well, they have to physically get, you know, patch over to Philly and let them know there's not that direct link. So hopefully that'll change, but it, it, you're right, it happens all the time. You'll see people come in where we'll go and we'll notify the radio, like, hey, we're coming in. And a lot of times they'll do, they may do that to, you know, if they're pursuing a car and they shouldn't be pursuing a car and they might not go over radio, so you'll see cars coming in.
The only reason why it's just kind of like, it, it's just scary these days and times simply because you hear so many times about, um, people impersonating police officers. So, and that, that just happened, it was just reported on the news where someone was impersonating. A police officer had the shirt with the police, you know, insignia on it and knocked on someone's door. And that was just reported, so it's like, you know, I mean, it was like four, four police cars, so, you know, it's not that many crooks getting together like a gang and doing something like that elaborate, but.
I think we just gave them an idea and that.
Thank you, thank you all very much.
Sometimes, I know when to leave the stage.
Sometimes, sometimes, let me just add to that, sometimes, um, the, um, it could be, uh, the US Marshals, uh, the, uh, um, Philly cops, there's certain contingent of Philly cops that are, uh, apportioned to the US Marshals and they could be on a job that emanates from Philly, but it's in Yaden. They should tell us, they don't have to, tell our police officers. So sometimes there's activity that stems from the US Marshals that, and I, I've known of some of those, uh, situations where they may come in and it could be really, really confidential where they, they don't tell anybody.
Well, I understand what you're saying, this wasn't confidential because this was out in the open, but for, from a safety standpoint, I just feel like it's important that we know what's going on. So may, even if it was one cop car and one officer from Philadelphia, but he wasn't legitimate, how would we know? You understand what I'm saying? So at least we would have our own in the area, so we would feel like, oh, okay, this is legitimate.
Yeah, and, and what I'm saying is, sometimes when they do have those legitimate situations, they should tell our police chief and, like, I, I have a neighbor that's in the Philadelphia Police Department, but he's a US Marshal. And he would say, hey, we're having a job tomorrow, we want your chief to know, we don't have to tell you. But out of courtesy, they usually do so that we know if you get a call, you know, we know there's what's legitimate or not. But they don't have to tell you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It sounds like switching to eight hundred megahertz will get us more information. All right. Um, do we have anyone for, uh, from the Fire Department or Emergency Management?
I don't believe there's a representative today.
All right, so Recreation?
Um, Mr. Hunter? Yes? Come on up. I just want to say before Mr. Hunter comes up that we are looking for people to volunteer, obviously, for Flag Day. If you don't want to join the Recreation Committee, that's fine, you can still, uh, volunteer for Flag Day separately. Like you just want to devote your day to Flag Day, so just send me your information, um, or get in touch with Mr. Hunter, via email or Mr. Hunter, um, gave his number, I will, so that's all.
So could I suggest that maybe we, uh, reach out to, um, Ms. Sett and have her, uh, create a form online? So we can just, you, you may, we may not have known that that was available. So, you know, just have her, you know, create a sign-up form, so it can be digitized and, you know, you can kind of keep track of your volunteers that way? All right, thank you.
Good, because we have, um, a volunteer list, I think Hakima, Jabar sent it out, so we, we're kind of getting the ball rolling.
Shout out to Hakima, she's on Zoom.
Uh, just very quickly, uh, to Counselor Trueheart, uh, if you would, and I don't know if I should be doing this, contact the school district, you know, not only yesterday, but Monday, we had a Yaden resident killed in Darby, uh, shooting fifteen-year-old. Uh, and, you know, I have the track team and, and we practiced today, the kids are just all over the place. Um, and they're asking me, you know, why did it happen, that kind of thing. So it's, it's a tough situation out here now, it really is. So, um, if you could get in touch with the school district, uh, I don't know if school's going to be open tomorrow or not, I assume they will be, but they canceled all afternoon activities today. Um, so a lot of things are going on with our kids, so. Get ready for the seventy-fifth anniversary of our Flag Day, switch gears. Uh, Saturday, June fifteenth is the date. Uh, we're working hard, uh, Counselor Beatty is beating us into shape. Putting a lot of pressure on us, but I think it's going to be a good situation. We have, uh, we had an initial meeting on Tuesday and I think we, uh, we came up with some good ideas, but we definitely need, uh, the public to, uh, kind of join in with your ideas and concepts and that kind of thing. Um, location, whether we can have fireworks, we don't know yet, but we're going to, we're going to work on that. Uh, but as soon as you can get that information, uh, we can get it out, uh, we'll meet again. And we'll be meeting in between our Recreation Meetings, which are going to be held on this first Tuesday of each month. So, uh, just keep that in mind. Uh, Camp Garrett has called us and, uh, they're looking to, uh, get started again. Scholarship information is out. We have it on the website and we have it on Yaden Neighbors and any other place we could put it. We'll give some to the library so they can get those out. But again, this will be our twelfth, thirteenth year with Camp Garrett. Um, fantastic program, we've sent about three hundred kids over the years to, uh, Camp Garrett who actually is campers and some of them have been counselors. Uh, and some of them have, uh, found their significant other at Camp Garrett. And one of it is my son. So, so I'm all for.
Camp Garrett baby.
That's exactly right.
Mr. Hunter, have you, uh, shared the flyer with the, with, uh, the schools?
Uh, yes, we'll give them out to the schools, we got the flyer today, we'll get those out to the schools, library, as many places as we possibly can. Uh, so that's on the way. Uh, the Pennsylvania Resource Council and the Stormwater Coalition wants to sponsor a free composting workshop with free compost bins here in Yaden. So I kind of said, okay, that's good, uh, we'll do that. I'll find out next week what, uh, dates they're looking at. We're also going to have some more rain barrel workshops in Yaden, so. And there are a number of people in Yaden who have rain barrel workshops, there's some people who actually have rain gardens on their property. Uh, so, uh, we're becoming a green country town, so that's, uh, that's good. Um, in light of what's happened with the school district, uh, we're looking at some opportunities to work with young people on entrepreneurship, leadership development. to work with young people on entrepreneurship, leadership development, and some things that they can do with their on-the-job training. Instead of having the on-the-job training, it's okay to work at Giant and work at the supermarkets, but we want to get some opportunities to meet with the managers of Giant. We want our kids to become managers. You know, we have a whole bunch of Giants around here, and they're food opportunities, and it's really agribusiness. So we want to start to turn our young people on, especially, they can be regional managers for all these, for Giant and some other places. And I think we've got to get some real opportunities for our kids to start to develop some job skills. So we're going to be working on that with the direct department.
So, sounds like uh Philly's best state company might be looking.
Exactly, exactly.
Jesse Peets got his start there. So.
Flag Day. But those are the kinds of opportunities we're talking about.
Right.
As I mentioned before, we um, a couple of residents that I went up to the farm show in Harrisburg, uh, people don't realize that Pennsylvania is a large agricultural state. Um, because people used to say Philly on one end, Pittsburgh on the other, and everything in the middle is Alabama. So it's a huge agricultural state, and those job opportunities uh in agribusiness, usually urban kids don't think that they can go into agribusiness, because we're on the receiving end of all the food to fight, but we need to be in the middle of situations. So we have a couple of projects that we want to do, looking at supermarkets in this area. You know, the Giant in Lansdowne, what does it sell? How do they get their food? Uh, what does their health food look like? What does the one, is there a difference between the Giant at Lansdowne and the one in Haver Town? Size-wise, selection, all of those things. Those are the types of things we need to be doing, so we're going to try to take a look at that.
Thank you for, thank you very much. Thank you for all you did.
Madam President.
Mayor?
Yeah, real quick, uh, so that we're all on the same page, I don't, I I want everybody to to know that uh we have invited for Flag Day all the um rep, all our legislative representatives, uh, letter went out to John Fetterman, Senator Fetterman, letter went out to Senator Casey. Um, our state Senator Anthony Williams, uh, Chi, uh, Joanna McClinton, uh, County Council. So we want to make this really big. It's a seventy-fifth, so letters did go out, inviting them officially. And we're we're going to continue to follow up on that. And if you make it big, if you build it, they'll come. Yes, so we want.
Possibly inviting, we have to go through Clear Channel to uh possibly invite Patty Jackson to MC once again, so we need to get her schedule, see if that's available. She's not going to be available the whole time, but we'll talk about what can happen with the program.
I'd like to invite the Roots too.
All righty.
I'm related to, I'm related to the drummer.
Yeah, because, well, I'm here, plus love's father, Dave, so hopefully we'll be right on the beat.
Ooh, y'all putting people, business in the shoes. Very much. Does there, and your report, Counselor Beatty, does there in your report?
And it's my report.
Thank you very much. All right.
Yeah, let's start.
All right. So uh, all right, I want to thank everyone for coming, coming out tonight. Thank you for all of those attending on Zoom. I look forward to many more productive meetings. Our meetings aren't typically this long. Uh, what we can look forward to at our next meeting, it will strictly be a voting meeting. All of the reports here will be uh accepted and submitted with periodic updates, if there are any, between now and next week. So next week is strictly our voting meeting. We should be in and out. All right. Thank you so much. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second it.